Good evening, everyone, and I want to welcome you to the Monday, February 21st, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. At 5:00, we had a couple of work sessions, one about the North Beach residents, and then 5:30, we had a discussion on the future land use map plan review. And just a quick note, Commissioner White stated last meeting that he would not be here today, taking some well-deserved time off. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order now, and the first item is our invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask if our vice chairman would lead us in that this evening.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this glorious evening, Lord. As springtime comes upon Currituck County, Father, we are grateful for the weather and that which causes our trees to bloom, our flowers to bloom, Father, and brings back the beauty to remind us that winter is merely fleeting. Father, I pray that you would bless us, this Board of Commissioners, this evening. Lord, I pray that you would grant us wisdom as we consider the issues before us. Father, I also pray a blessing of protection and safety over Bob, his wife and son, while they're on vacation. Lord, may they return safely. Father, bless this evening, in Jesus' name I ask.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, under the consent agenda, a budget amendment, which is item number 20220083 on page 19, to have that removed so we can have Chief Milton come in and discuss with us the overtime. It's for $815,000, and I'd like some clarification on this, so I'd like to have just that one item under the budget amendments removed.
Okay. Any other agendas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, under administrative, I'd like to have a discussion amongst the board and consider a resolution.
You mean under new business, you mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Specifically to address the new restrictions that are being considered on striper fishing in our region, specifically Currituck County, but they, it was decided this past year to reduce the amount of fish that were allowed to be caught, and it appears that we're headed for even greater restrictions, and I would like our board to consider a resolution opposing that.
Okay, so I guess we'll make that item A under new business, and then move the other ones down to B, C, and D, and E accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, here none, I'll ask for a motion.
Move for approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussions on it? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And next is our public comment. This is a time for the citizens and the public to come before us and discuss any matter or any item they would like to talk to the board. We give you three minutes, and you'll see a clock up there will turn green. When you see yellow, if you could get about 30 seconds left, you could kind of wrap up your thoughts, and you'll be under interrupted time, speaking of any matter you want. And I had a few that might have been here for the work session, and I'll just go through them. Nick Ellis, I believe was with the horse tour. Cindy Midkeff. Lisa Hurley. Kathy Blanton. Larry Wiley.
I think they were all here.
Yeah, I'm just gonna read them out there for Tina Wettingill, I guess that's how you pronounce it, screws me if I'm wrong on that one. And the next item we have is Denise Fallon. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name's Denise Fallon. I live at 553 Winslow Road in Hertford, North Carolina, and that's really strange to say that. Well, thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come before this board and share some information with the public about the school where I'm the principal, JP Napp Early College, here in Currituck. And I did also share a handout with you. So it's recruitment time at JP Napp, and I like to come out and spread the good word about what's going on in my school. So it's recruitment time, and recruitment at JP Napp means that eighth graders can apply to attend JP Napp Early College. That's open to all eighth graders in Currituck County, whether they attend a public school or homeschool or private or whatever. It's open to everybody, and so not everybody knows that. But those applications, students can complete those, they're online, so they can find them on our website, and those are open until March 4th. And so again, JP Napp's an opportunity for students to earn college credit while they're still attending high school. We operate under that umbrella of the college and career promise here in North Carolina. Last year, 86% of our graduates graduated with an associate degree, a credential or a diploma from College of the Albemarle, and I think that's pretty impressive in the midst of a pandemic. And this year, we're on track for about 89% of our students to graduate with that. So we're really proud of the work that our students and our staff do to work together to make that happen. One other thing I want to mention tonight is that students who can transfer into JP Napp if they come from a similar program. So if they come from another early college, or they come from some sort of advanced placement sort of, sometimes private schools have different things, we look at all of those on a case-by-case basis. So sometimes students do come to JP Napp that are not ninth graders, and again, we look to afford those opportunities to people here in Currituck County. Of course, it's just for our residents, so it's, I think it's a great opportunity for folks. We do have a target demographic. We're looking for those first-time collegegoers, at-risk students, English is their second language, low socioeconomic status, but that's just our target demographic. That doesn't mean you have to fall into one of those categories to be a student at JP Napp. So that's really all I had to say this evening. Again, I encourage the public, if they're watching tonight, to find out more about our school, check out our website, give me a call, I can answer any questions that you have. And it's a great school, so I encourage folks to apply.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions for her, if she doesn't mind. First off, I'd like to say that Ms. Fallon and Ms. Boyer, her assistant principal, I'll go to that school all the time, they run a tight ship, they do a really, really good job. That school is like a factory, like the Ford plant used to be or whatever. I mean, it's, y'all do a great job, so good job on that, and the results show. I do have a couple of questions, because I've been asked this. Now, if a child is a student at Napp, they now, can't they participate like in band, for one example?
Yes, our students can participate in band, and actually, this year, our students started to travel to the high school to take that band class as well.
Okay.
So they take the class, and they do after-school, they can participate in drama productions.
About FFA and stuff like that?
They cannot, no.
Okay. Yeah, Mike said, he's happy about the band, but I didn't know, I didn't know if they could.
We had to work hard to get, make that happen, because they were always behind. They'd get there after-school, and it's big drama, but we made that happen, so I was excited about that.
But no to the, like, the FFA or the stuff like that?
Yeah, that's a no to that, but our students do take some of those CTE courses, not those particularly, but they have those opportunities at the college level. And I know that COA has a new agribusiness program. We haven't had anybody try it yet, but we're always looking for new opportunities for our students. So our students take a lot of art courses at the college level, welding, CAD, lots of different things, especially over at the Maple campus.
Did you say they could get involved with drama as well?
They can, they can do any of those drama productions, and our students actually do those, and they get involved in the drama productions over at COA as well.
Oh, wow.
I just want to say that I know you must be very proud of your students and how, not only do they go to COA, they take the leadership roles. I know I've mentioned before, the Student Government Association over there, they present to us regularly at the Board of Trustees, and the overwhelming majority of those officers are from JP Napp.
Yes.
And that is such a proud moment for me, and it's a proud moment, I'm sure, for you, Ms. Fallon, and I know it's a proud moment for Currituck County. So good job on the leadership, too.
Thank you for that. We promote that leadership with all of our clubs, of course, they're, all of our clubs are service organizations in some way, and we really push them to be leaders and to have a voice, if you will. And so I like to see it beyond, you know, it's great that we have a campus here in Maple, and that expansion has really been wonderful for us, and we encourage our students to get involved beyond that campus, and so it is a proud moment for me as well.
Your enrollment, the max enrollment is what, like, low threes there?
350.
350. What do y'all have this year there?
About 257.
Okay.
Last year was sort of a low year for recruitment, and that's why I'm here tonight. I wasn't sure with the pandemic and the way things were going, if we didn't get the word out like we needed to. Right now, our recruitment numbers are looking pretty good. We've got about 70 applicants right now, and so I think that's pretty good for half, about halfway through that recruitment time. But we always have to leave a little bit of room, if you will, so that students have the opportunity to stay a fifth year if they choose to do so. So if they're working to complete a program at the college level, I do approve for them to stay that extra year, so again, it's no cost to their family for them to complete that program at COA.
I have to ask, why are they not allowed to participate in FFA?
Because that, that course in particular is tied to an actual class at CCHS, so at Currituck High School, and they have their own special number with the state of North Carolina, and we have ours, and so students that attend those classes have to be enrolled in that school. Band is a little bit different, because it's a different type of course and program, if you will. There, again, there's some, like, our kids can't participate in athletics either, because that's ruled by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, which, you know, they have got a lot of controls.
Bands only been, what, a couple of years, too, right?
This is the first year students have traveled there.
I thought it was two.
Yep. They've participated after-school, but it's always been a challenge, you know, for that to happen.
And I just want a little side note here.
Can I finish something real quick, Mike, before I forget it?
Yeah, yes.
And the other thing is, sometimes, just with scheduling, is sometimes a nightmare with some of those other courses. Band is at the end of the day, and we had students going anyway, so we were able to make that work. But sometimes it's just very difficult, especially when you get students at that college level trying to take those college courses and make some of those other things work, too.
Yeah, the reason I ask is I know a couple that said they would love to apply, but they could not join the FFA there, so.
Well, I'm open to suggestions. You know me, I'm always looking for a way, so if anybody's got an idea, let's talk.
I'm just starting a chapter at COA.
You know what? I've thought about that, so they need one.
I tell you, the COA kids, the ones that you, and I know the, most of the kids, like you said, from coming by Napp or whatever, but I will say this at our county buildings, at the Public Safety Building, my office for the Sheriff's Department's there, the kids, like, I mean, their behavior, I mean, like I said, I think maybe one or two times I've had this.
Oh, no, I've had to go visit, too.
You run a tight ship.
Mm-hmm. I've had to visit.
Yeah.
They, they get real comfortable, because there's a lot of them over there.
But I would say 95% plus, their behavior's great.
I appreciate you saying that. Some of those boys.
I think they know that Ms. Fallon will get them.
And the one little side note I wanted to bring up is, I noticed this year, the, it's a Good Man Charlie Brown play, and I believe 40 years ago today, my senior year, I was in that play.
You were.
You were in drama with us, and the director is sitting in the audience.
Yes, indeed.
Mrs. Snowden was one of the directors for that play.
You know, it was so.
I've got to tell you, Mrs. Snowden, appreciate this, when I saw that that was going to be the play, I immediately broke out in song, singing a book report on Peter Rabbit.
Now, we could volunteer the chairman, if y'all need somebody for the part.
I played Schroeder, and I still remember all lines.
Yeah, I know.
Schroeder's, I was Schroeder in that play.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
It was fun, so I plan on going again, because it was, it was a fun time.
Me, too, me, too. I'm excited.
You'll have to give us a one-man show.
Anyways, but no, I think.
Yeah, I got a teacher with them.
Let's see if Mrs. Snowden will get up and reject us again, but anyways, Denise, thank you for everything. I mean, you've done a great job there, and I know you're, you've been in this county a long time, and I know you care about those kids there, so just thank you again.
I sure do, yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Fallon?
Just do a great job. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
All right, the next person signed up we have is Ms. Barbara Snowden.
I will admit, Mr. Chairman, you look a little bit different than when you did on stage. My name is Barbara Snowden, and I live at 154 Courthouse Road, and before I get into why I'm here for, may I make another comment, Denise? I was looking at US, the US list of the top high schools in the nation, and when you find that JP Napp Early College is listed as one of the very best, and there were only a few North Carolina schools listed, it was very proud, I was very proud to see that in print in a national magazine. All right, why I'm here tonight, I want to talk about a project that y'all have already approved, and that is the stabilization of the jail. Stabilization, as we know, is the first step into the restoration of the jail. The reason I'm here tonight is I would like to invite each one of you, I know that your nights are very busy, but if you could make another night, next Monday night at the library, the Currituck County Historical Society will be meeting. Our program will be on the jail. There will be a short presentation on the history of the jail, going back to the 1700s of the buildings that have stayed, that have been on this particular property. Then we will have the engineer talking about what is actually being done in the stabilization of the jail. I'm sure you've all seen the, and heard the noise coming out of the jail and seeing the equipment over there. And then finally, we will have a discussion on what people might like to see that building being used as, and we realize it will be your decision as to how that building will be used, but I think it's always good to have county input of people saying, you know, what would I like to see in that building, or what possibly could be done with that building. And those, that will be done, it is not a formal public hearing, but the public is definitely invited. Anybody who would like to come and take part in the discussion, we'd be glad to have them. The meeting will be at the Barco Library at 7:00. And always, our Historical Society meetings are open to the public, and we would love to see some of you here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. Okay, I have no one else signed up for the public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? If you do, if you could come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
I spoke with you, Paul, earlier.
Okay, you are actually been added to the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so.
I'm sorry, I got here as quick as I could.
Okay, okay, got you then, okay.
As you expected.
Oh, okay.
You did a great job.
Okay. All right, well, that being said, I had no one others, or anyone else out there who did not sign up? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment and move into the Commissioner's report, and this evening, I'll start off to my right and start off with Commissioner Owen Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As all of us are aware, the world is at a perilous time right now. It looks like we could have the beginnings of a war in Europe, and I just ask people to ask Heavenly Father to let calmer heads prevail and this not happen. It seems like steps were taken this afternoon by Mr. Putin that will begin that process of starting an invasion. So let's just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Commissioner McCord?
Just a couple of things. I'd like to invite my fellow, as well as the county manager and commissioners, we have a retiree luncheon next Monday, the 28th, write that on your schedule. It's for, actually for four of our retirees. It's from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Public Safety Building. The last one we did there worked out really well, how we kind of did everything. Two, it's actually their last day of employment that day. Ms. Linda Farby from the office that's worked for the county for just a little over 20 years, she lives, Ms. Linda is a huge asset, and she's going to be greatly missed. I mean, if you got a question, she answers everything, and she'll do everything, she's awesome. J.J. Jordan, which is going to be the end of an era on Knott's Island, one of our deputies is retiring, that's his last day of employment as well. It's gonna be crazy, because like, when anything happened on Knott's Island, they called the guy, or they went to his house. So he's the second one, the third one. Deputy Lisa Starcher, and she would let me say this, she was my former partner at work, she was, she had some medical stuff, so she retired. So it's her as well, and then our last one, which you guys saw, Corporal Chapel, who left with us, and we just retired his canine, I believe, the last meeting. It's for those four, so it's from 11:30 to 1:30. It's $10 for the food, for the lunch. If you want to come, send me a message, whatever, like I said. And that's it on that, so that's the 28th. Probably have 60 to 80 people there for that. Like I said, it's a, it's a, like Commissioner Etheridge said, it's kind of a turning point where we're, you know, you hate to see, I mean, we've lost some really, really good people to retirement, I'm glad for them, but like, envious of them in some ways, as well as like, I hate them because they left, no, I'm just kidding. But I mean, like you said, you know, they've done a lot of service. The people in Knott's Island are gonna struggle with J.J. leaving, because every call, I mean, it's like, I know J.J., or J.J.'s my neighbor, I mean, it's gonna be really weird for them over there, because he's not gonna be there anymore. That, and just like I said, be cautious, I mean, the fires that we have in with the volunteer fire department, the ones on the mainland and Corolla, they do a great job, as well as our paid fire, I mean, we've had a lot of fires this year, and we've had some really bad total losses and stuff like that. Like I said, so please support those guys, you know, they're out here, and all your first responders, public safety, all that stuff. You know, it's been a crazy, crazy winter with that. I know we've had so many fires, it's ridiculous. So, but, and like you said, you can contact the fire departments for the batteries for the, your smoke alarms, like I said, we have a program for that. So like I said, maybe that would help prevent some of it, but like I said, it's, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chairman Obama?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just real quick, I just wanted to touch base on the fire departments. Yeah, we had a pretty big fire this week in Lower Currituck that pretty much, and we've been seeing a lot more lately, so please support them as much as you can, and one way you can support Lower Currituck is on, this Friday, the 25th, they're having a spaghetti dinner, it starts at 5:00 PM. You can go in and sit down, or you can drive through, it's $8 a plate. It's just a fundraiser for the department there, you can come in and tour the facilities, look at the apparatus, ask questions, meet your firefighters. I'll be there as well, and showing everybody around, so it's a good time to get out, support your fire departments, get some spaghetti, and take a look to see what, what they're taking care of you with, and, and then, again, just be safe out there. I mean, the tourist season's getting ready to start here soon, and they're getting ready to, they're taking care, they're scraping the roads in the south end of the county. They're getting ready, and people have asked that they're not gonna start putting the surface down until it gets warmer, because they need warmer conditions for that stuff to adhere properly. So they're gonna scrape the roads, get them ready to go, so when we do start getting warmer weather, that's when you'll see them starting to put the surface down, so, you know, don't expect to see that right away, they're just getting the, getting it all set up, so. That's all I had this evening.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, and, and I've asked our county manager on multiple occasions, because they're not sweeping the roads, and I've had multiple complaints of debris in the roads, taking out windshield. So if anybody is, encounters those conditions, please call.
Maple.
If you want to call.
NC DOT.
Well, we've been calling the DOT Maple facility and letting them know of our concerns and citizens' concerns. I do know that the clerk has called a couple of times. I saw myself, after the first call, they had actual street sweepers out there cleaning up the devils, and it really helped out the situation.
They do, all right, if you know the road a lot. They had them out there today.
They're sweeping them, but again, they're not.
But I know, like, last Friday, on the way heading south, I was getting sprayed again, so, and the other thing.
They only work if they're running.
Right, right.
But, but we have, I think, a good response when, when we've received the information, so, I mean, folks can, can call, I guess, county offices.
The end is always looking for.
Right, and, and we'll get, we'll get worded.
Chance to answer the phone.
We'll get worded DOT and ask that they communicate with their contractor.
They have been doing better.
Yeah.
All right, next is our Commissioner Mary Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Monday, I attended Currituck County's Alcoholic Beverage Control Board meeting, and on behalf of the ABC Board, I'd like to thank the staff at our local ABC stores for all their hard work. Throughout the state and in our county, there's a shortage of workers and sometimes even a lack of products. Currituck County ABC Board is aware of some of the issues facing our stores, and we're working with legal counsel to compile a new county policy for the ABC stores, plus a pay study. Again, we'd like to thank them for all their hard work.
You did a good job.
And then on Wednesday, I attended the Currituck County Social Service Board meeting, and at our meeting, DSS social worker Tiffany Sutton was issued the You Make a Difference Certificate of Appreciation. She was recognized for her dedication to helping foster children with high-intensity behavioral problems and mental health issues, and for advocating for their treatment. Ms. Sutton has worked for the Currituck DSS since 2014. She handles foster care, foster home licensing, adoption, she teaches the Foster Home Licensing Course, and she also serves as an on-call after-hour supervisor. Again, thank you, Ms. Hudson, for all you do for the children of Currituck County and for really making a difference here in our county. Thank you.
She does an awesome job, she does.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Commissioner Jarvis?
I don't have much tonight, just to say that there's nothing that makes you appreciate where you live and the people around you, like traveling abroad, and if you don't feel blessed where you are, all you have to do is just to look at so many other people in need, and so many people who leave their families to try to work and make it back to them. So I just want to say it's good to be home, and it certainly made me appreciate where I'm from. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Next, we have our county manager slash county attorney report.
Mr. Chairman, the board has been very patient. I'm happy to report that I think the Paradise Homes cleanup is about to come to a resolution. As you know, the county had to ultimately go to court, receive a court judgment that authorized the county to go upon the property, upon the property owner's failure to do so, and to clean the property of the dilapidated manufactured homes. As required by statute, the county must sell all salvageable material, and any proceeds that are raised from the sale of those salvageable materials, after the county deducts its cost, must be returned to the owner of the property. Due to the good efforts of our able-assistant Rebecca Gay, who is kind of headed up and spearheaded moving this along, we placed all these manufactured homes on Gov. deals. Surprisingly to me, received bids on eight of them totaling $68,000.
Wow.
So the only one we did not receive a bid on is already collapsing on the ground, so we will be within 30 days wrapping up the final sales agreement, and the individuals will have that amount of time to get the units off of the property. So we are heading to resolution of that particular ISO on the corridor.
Question regarding that last one, that when everything's moved off, would that be possible to offer like a burn training, maybe let them burn it down, or is that even doable with that?
I think that one is completely, is it not completely?
I think it's already down.
It's hard to tell, but it looks like it's mostly. It's mostly down.
It's mostly down.
Okay, okay.
Can we sell the tree, the trees that are sold?
Can we sell the trees, the trees out of some of them?
Cluttered crawling drills.
Yeah, well, I wish you would, okay.
So that has come into a conclusion at long last, and be glad to see that that area finally cleaned.
Good.
The week before last, airport manager and county staff and me met with our consulting engineers for the airport, Talbot and Bright. The new airport layout plan is underway. It's a 20-year plan, and I guess up to 40 years ultimately. So we looked at five or six different iterations or proposals for the plan. And then last week, a team of staff members met again to kind of go over what we think would be the most, the best to recommend for Talbot and Bright to put into a study, put into the plan, and submit to the Division of Aviation for their review and okay. Of course, it will come back to this board for your ultimate review and decision. But it looks like there's some very exciting opportunities in that plan for the county and its airport going forward. After again seeing the accolades of our airport manager, William Nelson, he's doing a fantastic job, continues to make records in the amount of fuel that we're selling, the amount of air traffic coming in and out, particularly the type of jet aircraft that's coming in and out of there, and the amount of interest that's being expressed by owners of aircraft, that they certainly would like to find a way to base their aircraft here at Kurutuck County if we can eventually get the facilities there.
Is there a hangar under construction right now?
We finished one hangar with a private individual the board approved to lease for. That one's complete. I believe in his, his aircraft are now housed here.
Yes.
Based, and that's, you know, a nice tax value on those aircraft, or the aircraft he has here. I think he has another one he wants to bring in. We also were in discussion with a second individual to do a similar project, but he is, for some reason, holding back at this point and not moving forward. But that's also part of this airport layout plan, and then we need to start figuring out and be careful about how we're placing things and utilizing our airport and adjacent properties so we don't box the airport in and prevent some good growth in the future.
It's growing.
Yes, it is.
Next, you remember in 2019 when you met for two days over at Cooperative Extension, and we went through area by area of the county and determining what might be some goals to meet? And about a month or so ago, had a meeting with Cameron Lowe and one of her staff members to talk about the concept of a high tunnel and incubator idea for growing and teaching persons how to grow high-end, high-valued vegetables in a small place or location, particularly getting into the restaurant or food industry as a place to market these products.
That was the table, the garden to table or farm to table. Yep.
And so that's, one of your goals was that, and also to provide for incubator or other training kind of facilities for agribusiness in the county. So what, there's now a grant opportunity for Cooperative Extension to be able to get a high tunnel, which to me, a layperson is a greenhouse, and which they will focus on growing these kind of vegetables and teaching people how to do the same thing on their property with these high tunnels or greenhouses and growing these same kind of vegetables and marketing them. And so we've identified a location. They need water and electricity to the, to the high tunnel. And so the only place we've been able to really find is kind of adjacent to the back parking lot, a cooperative extension, trying to make it not so visible as you come in, again, the entry to the Commerce Park, one of the entryways. But I will hope to have done it tonight, but I'll send to you an aerial photo, kind of the ideal location. I've indicated my concern about how it might look. They are committed to having the master gardeners do some landscaping kind of work to.
Is this behind where they're kind of doing some growing right now?
No, that area is pretty much filled.
Built.
Cameron Lowe and I walked around the properties last week trying to find a site. This is actually, as you come in, right across from the animal shelter, make that left to that back parking lot, and there's kind of a flat area right as you enter into the parking lot there behind Cooperative Extension. But that, that's about the best place we were able to identify that has electricity, water. It was right there at the Cooperative Extension.
How big was, how big of a?
It's about 30 feet by 50 feet.
Pretty decent size.
But I'll send that to you and hope that that site is satisfactory so we can move forward on that project. And then lastly, I want to also make a comment about our fantastic IT Director, Logan Stees. He continues to do wonderful things and to make a name for this county and for himself. I was attending the Virtual County Attorney Conference several weeks ago, and one of our seminars had to do with cybersecurity. And Shannon Tufts, who is the cybersecurity or the IT expert at the School of Government, was making comment about, well, they have strike teams around the state of IT professionals who were able to come in when there's an attack on a unit of local government's computer system, ransomware, those types of things we've heard about. Passapatanck County had that incident a few years ago. And so these strike teams are able to go in and help a local government save its data or try to recover and retrieve it. And so I went downstairs to see Logan. I said, Logan, you ought to get involved in that, you know, you probably really, really be good for that. He said, well, he said, you know, I went to the seminar at the School of Government for certification courses about a year ago, and I told him I was interested, and they told me to sign up, and I did, but I've never heard anything from them. So he said, I'll get back up with them. Well, he texted them. They came back and said, well, you're on the team. We're broken up.
Congratulations.
Well, we're broken up into sections of the state. And so you're on the northeast regional team, but there's been no attacks out here since he was on it, so there's been nothing for you to do. Well, the next Monday, I came in to work, and Logan's up in the kitchen, as he usually is, first thing in the morning. He said, well, he said, I said, well, how was your weekend? He said, well, I'm pretty tired. I spent all weekend long on a strike team, on the strike team with an issue in Yadkin County, had had an issue. And he said, I'm thinking maybe it was a test because one of the members of the statewide strike team was so impressed with my work that I am now on the statewide strike team.
Wow, that is great.
Logan, I will say this, and I've talked to Logan today for about five minutes. Logan is, and like you're talking about William too, we have, I mean, I've said it.
Get good staff.
We got good staff, and we're fortunate.
We do. And you know that our systems are in the hands of Logan Stees. We can feel very, very comfortable, I think. He's done some good things.
Great news.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. All right, the, our next item of business is new business. And the first item A is going to be in regards to striper season and a resolution. And I will, I guess we have a gentleman, if you could come forward, please, we're going to, it's you.
It's his phone, we got the email.
That's right, yeah, the email today. But if you could, just state your name and address, just for the record, but then just kind of give us an update, what's going on and how this board can help, and just so the public can know what's going on as well.
Perfect. I'm not 100% prepared, but I really appreciate y'all letting me come. My name's Reece Decker.
Nice note is coming up here, yeah.
Well, thank you. Yeah, my name's Reece Decker. I guess technically I could claim Kurutuck County. I do own a couple lots up in Corrala on Swan Island Road, and we love camping up there. But I live in Kill double Hills right now. But thanks again for the short notice. Back in February of last year, I run a charter boat. I run a center console charter boat. I've got a boat slip at Oregon Inlet, but I also have another boat on a trailer that I bounce around. I fish up at Kurutuck, at the Kurutuck Bridge a lot in the spring and fall over at Mann's Harbor. But I'm not sure, not everybody's familiar with the Marine Fisheries Commission. The Marine Fisheries Commission is made up of nine, nine people. Two scientists, two recreational sector representatives, two commercial sector representatives, two at-large representatives, and the chairman who breaks a tie. But there is a new biologist by the name of Pete Cornegy. Back in, it was February, March was when they had, it was a Zoom meeting. But it was on the table. According to Dr. Cornegy, the striper population is collapsing in North Carolina. It was on the table, a 10-year moratorium, which threw us all for a loop because, you know, we, we did have it great back in the late 90s, early 2000s. I don't know how many of y'all fish or saw it. I mean, there used to be birds everywhere, fish everywhere, and then it kind of tanked out. But I would call what we've had over the last five, six years really good fishing. So it was, it was a surprise to all of us when this moratorium came in the pipeline. We got lucky, we were defeated because from what we understand, he didn't go through normal procedure, but it got the ball rolling for what's going on right now.
Thank you.
Maybe it may not make sense, but I'm trying to make sense.
We're used to seeing.
Thank you.
That's all right. I'll borrow them.
Anyhow, I mean, I respect the heck out of Dr. Cornegy and the head striper biologist. His name is Charlton Godwin, which a lot of this information I'm going to go over came from him. But I don't agree with them. I've run this boat and fished these waters for strippers since, full-time since 1997. As mentioned, we've had what I would call really good fishing to where the weather determines a lot of stuff with fishing. We've been catching these fish, especially in the fall. It doesn't matter what the wind's doing, which direction, how it's blowing. We've been catching them. So we're kind of miffed by this. I don't agree with it, but if it is deemed by the Marine Fisheries Commission that there is a problem, there's a simple solution to the problem. The solution starts with the elimination of the quota going to the Roanoke Rapids Management Area. Are y'all familiar with that? Well, let me back up. The striped bass quota is split right down the middle in two. The netters get half the quota, the recreational guys get the other half. The recreational half is split right down the middle between the Alamooral Sound Management Area and the Roanoke Rapids Management Area, which, I'm going to show you all that real quick. So this makes more sense. I didn't get here earlier, so I was trying to talk them out. I did the best I could do. But this giant body of water right here is the Alamooral Sound. Kurutuck County, Dare County, all up and down. I'm going to show you while I'm walking by. This little sliver right here is the Roanoke Rapids. This little sliver on the bottom. This giant body of water is, is the Alamooral Sound region, the little sliver here at the bottom, and it goes on a little bit further if we had a map and showed the whole thing. But that little sliver on the bottom is Roanoke Rapids. It's, I'm going to give you the exact numbers here in a minute, but the Alamooral Sound covers 664. Roanoke Rapids would be this little line. It's like comparing a basketball to a pencil line. It is Roanoke Rapids is 667,674 acres with a six-month season that is not during the spawn or on the spawning grounds. The Roanoke Rapids, it gets, Alamooral Sound region gets half the quota. That's Dare County, Kurutuck County, Quinones County, Passapatanck County, all of them, Corral County. Roanoke Rapids, it supports the city of Roanoke Rapids. 667,674 acres with a six-month season. Roanoke Rapids is 6,420 acres. Normally, they have a three-week season. They cut their quota last year. They went down to a one-week season. But their season is during the spawn and on the spawning grounds. And the Roanoke Rapids is the only place in the United States of America that there is a season allowed during the spawn, on the spawning grounds, while the fish are there. No other place in the country allows it. So we're splitting the quota right down the middle with them. We used to get, if you look at page, the first page with the graph on, the quota used to be 275,000 pounds. The netters got 137,500. We got 68,750. Roanoke Rapids got 68,750. We just got cut by 81.5% or whatever it is, down to 12,804 pounds. And 12,804 pounds go to Roanoke Rapids. This has nothing to do with the commercial side. The problem we have is with the allocation on the recreational side. So 667,000 acres versus 6420, the Alamooral Sound is 104 times larger than the Roanoke Rapids Management Area. It was, the quota was cut by 81.376% this past year. The Alamooral Sound region that supports Dare and Kurutuck County, and where everybody that y'all know and I know fish, we came in 4,546 pounds under quota in 2021. Roanoke Rapids, whose season got cut to one week, who's fishing during the spawn, on the spawning grounds, caught 14,742 pounds over quota. There's a meeting on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. There's a striped bass FMP meeting in, it's at New Bern. It's the MFC. That's why we're here. It's the first time we've had a chance in 23 years to change this quota and make it equitable. It is the farthest from being equitable with the way it's set up based on water mass. Well, if you, oh, we can't do it based on, okay, well, it's six months versus one week, one to three weeks. It's, no matter how you look at it, it's not even close to equitable. And I've heard the story from them before, well, it'll put Roanoke Rapids out of the city of Roanoke Rapids. Well, are these people at Marine Fisheries for the resource? Are they for the economy? They're supposed to be for the resource. But if they're for the economy, well, Roanoke Rapids has got a one to three-week season. What about Dare County, Kurutuck County, all the tourists that, I mean, I take people from Corral on my boat all the time. If you're going to talk about economy, there's several more, you know, we've got a lot more counties fishing in the Alamooral Sound region. We got six months out of the year economy instead of one to three weeks. So.
Tell me what the impact was when they reduced the quota or the.
It hurt our business.
From two, from two fish to one.
Well, we didn't even phone calls. And, you know, I've got people to come down that, I mean, they stay in Dare County too, but I've got tons of customers to stay up in Corrala, and that could be the difference between two trips or one trip. Or, you know, two years ago, we went every day. This past year, when it got cut down to one, I got a lot less phone. Well, can we keep one? We'll call you back. Now, if there's a problem, which I don't see, none of us see the guys fishing, but if there is a problem and you've got to cut something out, you start where they're keeping them on the spawning grounds. And you start where they're keeping them on the spawning grounds, and they're catching twice the quota than what they're supposed to. 14,742 pounds over quota. We were 45, 46 under quota. I mean, we're just, we've been getting a short end of this deal for 23 years. We finally got a chance to do it. We need help. There, the Roanoke Rapids is backed by the CCA. Do y'all know who they are? It sounds like you do. There's a lot of money, deep pockets. They're very smart. Most of them are from Raleigh.
They're different CCA.
Yes, I was going to say, it can't be the one. The function is the same one.
Well, they, the Marine, the Marine Fisheries Commission is appointed by the governor. The CCA's gotten very shrewd, and they've donated enough monies to the last couple governors where they, it's like they bought the commission. Where we've got recreational sector representatives that are supposed to be representing us charter boats, and when we come to them at the meetings, this is what you want, they vote against us. The ones that always vote with us are the commercial guys. But we need help. We need, I mean, it helps, it helps Kurutuck County. It helps Dare County. We need to be able to fish. And this quota's gotten, we've lost 80, over 80% of our quota, and they're getting half of it, and they're going over. And then the big one is what they call dead discards, okay? And I know a lot of these guys that fish over there on the Roanoke Rapids. There's a lot of catch and release fishing that goes on there, and they do have a keeper season. But they're always talking about the triple-digit days when you catch 100 fish. When you catch 100 fish, according to the biologists, in January, February, the water's colder. There's 6% mortality. In May, when the fish are really in their spawning hard, there's 10% mortality. They call them dead discards. They call them dead discards. In 2018, Roanoke Rapids had eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dead discards. In 2019, they had eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty discards. They didn't have data for 2020 because of total, but both of those years, Alamo Marl Sound region, this big giant area compared to this little pencil line, we had eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight harvested pounds. They had more dead discards by over a thousand than we had in a one-week, in a, in a three-week season. It's just the allocation, the allocation is the problem. You know, if, if they're not going to get rid of it, I don't want to put them out of business. I mean, I, I don't think it's right, you know, I, I love eating the fish. A lot of fish get killed in eating on my boat, but if there is a problem, as bad as they say there is, that's the first place you start. If you're not going to start there, either way, we've got the first chance in 23 years to get this quota geared towards where everybody's fishing.
Okay, so, so I'm going to help, right? We need to know, this board is unanimous, I think, in, in supporting something, right? But we need to know what that looks like. What are we asking for? What do we need to ask for? What, what language are we, are we writing? Have you gotten any feedback from any of the other counties affected?
Well, I'm, I'm going to, we're going to talk at Dare County tomorrow night and it's all, there's been a lot going on. It, it's, it's not a done deal this week. This is the first step of the, the FMP to Fishery Management Plan, but I think there's a couple...
We also enter a joint resolution with Dare County as well.
We would love that. I mean, real quick, since, since 1997, and you can look at, on your last, the last graph on here, our table, since 1997, they've had a hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dead discards. We had fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty. I mean, it's, to, to, to allow that season to go on if there's the problem, they say there is, and for us to get penalized when we're coming in under every year and we, and if you look at that, if you look at this third page, this dead discard thing, they're doubling us every year. They're doubling us every year, a three-week season, it was one week last year. A pencil line versus this giant body of water, what...
So maybe when, when you get, when you meet with Dare County tomorrow, maybe you can find a point of contact from them, have them reach out and get with Paul Boomout here and get them two together and, and work on a...
I mean, it, it's going to be, it's going to be a hard task because they have these people on the Marine Fisheries Commission, but...
Bobby Hannig and Bob Steinberg have been huge.
They, they got emails today too. I don't know if they sent them in, but hopefully they did. I mean, I, I sent them the same email I sent y'all, but...
I got to call into Bobby now.
We thought it wasn't going to be due until Wednesday or Thursday, but, I mean, at the very least, well, it's, we're fishing a hundred and four times bigger body of water. And the other stat is, what is it? If you're going by the season, we're down, we're eighty-three point three four, four percent less days. I mean, it's, it's gotta be, you gotta divide it on water area or you gotta divide it on, they're fishing one to three weeks, we've got six months. I mean, we're, we're eighty-eight percent bigger than them if you're going by fishing days and we're a hundred and four percent bigger than them if you're going by water mass. And the facts don't lie, that the dead discards, us coming in under quota, them doubling quota, I mean, it, it's a no-brainer, but it's, it's, it's a difficult task and...
We got it.
You guys sending a resolution or...
We can get this resolution, we can make contacts to our representatives as well, you know, for Currituck supporting...
And we, and we're going to try to get for Quinones and Pasquotank. I mean, they do a lot of it over on the other side of the sound, but, but, but yeah, it, we're all getting a short end of the deal. And we have been for 23 years.
What happens to them when they go over quota? Nothing?
They're, that's what we said, so they, so you're going to, you're going to penalize them and, and hold them back? Fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two pounds? Nope. They're going to, they're still going to give them a season this year, they're going to give them a two-day season, but in two days, when all those fish are concentrated there, they'll, they'll probably catch as much as we do.
Well, if the Alamo Marl Sound is under quota and they're over quota by so much...
Fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two pounds.
Doesn't make sense.
You're fighting something besides just quotas.
Oh, we're fighting the CCA.
They are killing more fish than we're catching. That's, that's a problem.
And not just, they're not just, they're not just harvest killing more...
No, they're dead killing.
Discards.
Right.
Their dead discard numbers are more than our total catch for the year.
And what even makes that worse is it's the spawning ground, so they're killing the fish that increase the number of fish that's just...
Killing the fish that are going to spawn and they can't. Well, we will, yeah, we'll get behind this and we'll get a nice resolution drafted up and then, and like I said, Paul's got some phone calls in.
I talked to Jim Tobin today, he might be the contact, you know, he's, I don't know if he runs Pirate's Cove, I think he does, or he's got a lot to do with it there, so he might be the point of contact there. I don't even know who to talk to at Pasquotank and Quinones, but they're next on the list.
We are going to do something, the county here, supporting our, you know, fishermen and the recreational piece of this.
Well, we, any, any help we can get, I mean, a, any help at all we can get, and I'll try to keep y'all posted on what the next step is. I, I, I think though, we have to get it on the agenda. So y'all, we, we need to get on the agenda that reallocating the quota is something to be debated, so from what I understand. I don't understand all this stuff, I'm learning as I go.
And, and I'm just going to say this because I've talked to several commercial fishers, I don't know how any of these guys are even able to go out into the water and, and fish because even the net guys, the regulations can change in, in the middle of the night. They don't even know when they leave the, the...
Flower season and all that, you're right.
I'm telling you, I...
Well, they bought the commission.
When you look at...
They bought with campaign donations to the governors and it's, like I said, we've got recreational sector representatives, we beg them to vote one way and then vote the commercial guys always vote the way they want. Everyone's we can count on and the ones that we're supposed to count on vote against us every time.
The recreational fishermen spend a lot of money.
And there's a lot of people...
There's a lot of money that's spent...
Third County up on the front. They charter us and, and, and they take care of us and they help us make a living and, and March, April, when the water's cold, November, December, when the water's cold, I mean, we still catch some drum, but the strippers, if you want to make a living running charters, that's what we got. And anyhow.
Senator Steinberg is on the Mid-Atlantic Fisheries Commission.
He got an email today.
So, good. Well, Mr. Decker, well, we appreciate you taking the time. I know we sure noticed you coming up here and enlightening us so we can...
You did a far better job than I would have done.
Glad you made it today.
I'm getting ready to leave my glasses and all my hair.
And then, like I said, we'll, Paul will take a point on this and get something, we'll get something drafted by this board then with Dare County.
I sent you a text this evening, so you... Well, you guys have my email anyway.
Got you, yes, sir. All right?
Thank you so much.
Take care.
We really appreciate it.
Be safe traveling.
Thank you.
Okay, get, let's take a quick two-minute recess or three-minute, just quick as we can. And then get back and keep it flowing, I'm just going to... Okay, we're going to get this back in session and we're going to go to item B, which is Commissioner Mary Etheridge's travel request to visit NC 365 Conference, March 20 through the 22nd of 2022 in the Durham Convention Center. And I believe Commissioner Etheridge would be the only commissioner traveling at this, I mean, going to this event, is that correct?
Far as I know, yeah.
I'll make a motion for approval for the travel request.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion on it? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, resolution authorizing sole source purchase of the Hershey water meters, Hershey water meters for Southern Out of Banks Water System.
They're the same ones.
What's that?
They're the same ones that we have there, so this is just, we're...
Yes, it, it authorizes an exception under the general statutes for purchasing to utilize sole source purchasing with the company that provides this very meter and antenna system that is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to second from Commissioner Owen Etheridge. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay. Item D, board appointments to fire an EMS advisory board. I'm not sure who had that appointment.
So that was Ryland's replacement with Steve.
That's right.
And I move for approval.
Second. Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah. The next item is the consent agenda. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? At this time, I'll ask for a motion to close our regular meeting.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I moved.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and at this time, I'll move into closed session. You need to recess it.
Yeah.
I can, I can...
You can get free recess and then entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, what did I say, close? I'm sorry, I was going too fast. Reset, well, let me rephrase that, to recess a regular meeting and go into a closed session.
Aye. So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now move, goes to closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct county staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the county in negotiating the material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase or exchange located at 2878 Kerituck Highway, Kerituck, North Carolina and owned by King